All right. The board, full board of Alderman will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Agassi.
Present.
Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Bommer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderman Switzer.
Present.
Alderman Howard.
Here.
Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Navarro.
President.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Bommer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. Twenty-one, present.
A quorum being present, um, our colleague Alderman Sharon Tyus, uh, asked if we would hold a moment of silence this morning for her friend and neighbor, uh, Mrs. Edith Cooper, who was a hundred and one years old. I mean, that is just amazing. One hundred and one years old. Uh, she passed last week. Uh, she was a friend, the neighbor of Alderman Sharon Tyus. Uh, so Alderman Tyus wanted to let us know she will not be making the meeting this morning, but she asked if we would all, uh, do a moment of silence and a moment of prayer for, uh, the passing of, of Ms. Edith Cooper and, um, her family and friends. So please join me in a moment of silence. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Want to thank everyone for making today's meeting and, uh, Alderman DeCarroll and, uh, Alderman Todd promised we'd get out of here in five minutes. So we're holding you all to. We would dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests, Alderman from the twenty-third.
As always, I like to have my good friend Greg Meyer, who is not Mr. Dominion, as my honored guest. Thank you. Welcome to Greg. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have a few honored guests. First of all, I want to make my honored guests the people I saw at nine something this morning on my way down to City Hall already lined up for the Urban League ULSTL food giveaway. Shout out to our former colleague Mike McMillan. I call him a goat. I call him Three Piece of More. That's an inside joke. Already lined up. You are then food giveaways from twelve to three. So that's what makes it so big that people are already lined up. Thank you, Mike McMillan, Urban League, all the work that you are continuing to do. But my honored guest in the office with me today is, come on over, Mr. Ishmael Bachway, tenth grader at Collegiate School of Medicine and Bioscience, St. Louis Public School, founder and CEO of Bow Ties by Bachway. He is a young entrepreneur, a community leader, and I have been crazy about him since, um, he was in BFL camps, right, with my children. That's when we first met. So he came, he was gonna be downtown. He said, can I come in there with you, Ms. Hubbard? I said, of course, anytime, because I know he is our future. So let's make sure we see that our children are watching. So good morning, Ishmael.
Let's give him a big round of applause. Congratulations and thanks for all that you're doing. Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any, any further? Uh, Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I must share with the Alderman in the twenty-sixth ward. You guys don't know this young man. He is incredible. I don't know if he remembers, you know, I used to do this thing where I would, uh, bring in all the young people where they could meet our leaders, and I would do it inside of a lounge, because I wanted them to know nothing miraculous happens in there. It's just a building, okay? But he spoke as a financial leader. I want to say he was only ten, but he's incredible. Thank you.
Wow. Well, thank you, Ishmael. Keep it up, keep it up, keep it up. Uh, you're an inspiration to not just people your age and younger people, but also you're an inspiration to all of us. So, so I appreciate all that you're doing. Any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We are here on National Spite Giving Day, which is right before Thanksgiving Day. So get all the spite out of your system today. So in eighteen eighty-nine, the first jukebox was, made his debut in San Francisco, and in nineteen oh four, believe this, the Summer Olympics came to an end on November twenty-third in St. Louis. That was quite an extended, uh, program they had back then. But more importantly, in nineteen ninety-eight, the Alderman from the twenty-third was giving so much hope in his life when Dennis Rodman filed for an annulment from Carmen Electra, thinking he might have a chance with her. Thank you.
All right. That's a good, that's a good one to start off. Approval of the Minutes.
Approval of the Minutes dated Friday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm moved for approval of the minutes from Friday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move, but all of them, second about all the ones from the fourth, the discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We'll dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of, or resolutions off of any of our informal accounts? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accounts? Dispense with line items eight. Rule ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill one thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress, except as noted under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill one thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one for the fifty-three thirty-six West Avenue area. Board Bill one thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman's Hide, an ordinance requiring the land reutilization authority of the city of St. Louis to maintain or cause to be maintained at its sole cost and expense the premises of all land reutilization authority-owned properties and the exteriors of any structures that any structures be maintained to comply with any and, and all applicable provisions of the city of St. Louis Building Codes. Board Bill one forty, not you, the number is not used this session. Board Bill one forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, an ordinance authorizing and directing the director's streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the one seventy block of East Grand Avenue, blocking said traffic flow at the intersection of East Grand Avenue and North Second Street. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the HUD's Committee, Board Bill one thirty-seven and one thirty-nine, to Neighborhood Development, Board Bill one thirty-eight, and to the Streets Committee, Board Bill one forty-one. That is extensive reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee with a due fast recommendation. Board Bill one zero one, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Bomber and President Reed, an ordinance pertaining to ward boundaries for the city of St. Louis, repealing ordinance six eight nine eight one, codified as Chapter two point one two of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, twenty twenty anno, establishing new ward boundaries within emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Dispense with line item fourteen. Section consent.
We have none.
Uh, board bills for perfection.
Board Bill nineteen, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, an ordinance establishing a detention facility oversight board comprised of nine city residents to serve as advisory body to the mayor, commissioner of corrections, and the director of public safety with regard to detention facility operations, conditions of, conditions of detention, and division of correction policies that is authorized to receive and investigate complaints of alleged correction misconduct and detention incidents, and make findings and recommendations based thereon, including recommendations regarding division of corrections policy and procedures, employee professional development, and employee disciplinary action.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill nineteen, committee substitute.
So we had, this is.
Would you like to make, make the motion to, uh,
make a motion that we put.
Board, perfect Board Bill nineteen, committee substitute.
Yes, like to make a motion, perfect Board Bill nineteen, committee substitute.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-third, entertain a second.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the fourteenth, Alderman from the twenty-third, please proceed.
So this is something that is well needed. We've discussed, in fact, we've actually worked on this in, in committee for quite a, a while. The Oversight Committee would be apprised of people that, but they would go back and report what their findings are to the, uh, Public Safety Director, and, uh, we would get a copy at the Board of Aldermen. It's important because there's a lot of people getting beat up in there. There's a lot of times the police are being called. Getting any information out of there has been near impossible. I had Lou, our attorney, send a sunshine request in. It came back as nothing. When I had him check, they said, oh, it, well, it, it came over as KK. And they said, gee, we, we recognize that we have a, we have a glitch in our computer. You would think they'd call and say something. So then we sent over a more updated, uh, you know, Lou wanted to make sure that it got in there. And then they said, okay, well, we can do this, but it'll be somewhere in February before we really get an answer, and it's gonna cost you like, I don't know, tons of money. Everything we do seems to hit this brick wall on information. I was part of, as well as Alderman Boyd, were part of the Oversight Committee that went in there, and we found eighty-two recommendations. That place is, you know, I mean, we've seen it on TV. The guards are afraid to go in. People get beat up. They're not, they don't have the stab vests or any of the things they need. So what this simply does is it provide, it puts together, uh, the plaintiffs coming from the Board of Aldermen and the mayor, uh, a group the same as the Police Oversight Committee that go in and, uh, basically look into what's going on there, hopefully have a voice for the people that are detained there and a voice for the guards. We would put on each area a lockbox that would only be accessible by the people that sit on the committee. Uh, this way, if, if, uh, detainees as well as, uh, people that work, you know, guards, want to put something in there, they don't have to put their name, but it certainly gives us a direction or gives the city a direction to look at the problems. And for those of us who have been over there and seen what's going on, you know, where you got multiple people in one cell that's got one toilet, no beds, no nothing. They sleep on a bench or on the floor. The, uh, you know, people that, again, we see it on TV where people have been beat up. We need to have this. This is just an important, uh, it's important to have this. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions, but what it is, is exactly what it says, a civilian oversight committee. You know, do they, they don't have the, they don't have the power to discipline, but they do have the power to, the power of the pen in a sense. They have the power to let us know what's going on in there. And, and, and right now, it seems like everything in there that goes on falls only on the people they wanted to, and nothing gets out. So, so I'm willing to answer any questions, but it's, it's a pretty simple bill.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Uh, will the Alderman from the twenty-third yield for questions?
Alderman from the twenty-third will yield a question to the Alderman from the thirteenth.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, uh, Alderman from the twenty-third. Uh, my first question is, what organizations have you spoken to, uh, in St. Louis, nonprofit or advocacy organizations that are in support of this bill?
I haven't. I have my own eyes. And I know certain people on this board are gonna want to speak for the mayor because they want a paid oversight committee, which is not a civilian oversight committee. We can't keep doing things like this. I see for, with my own eyes. I was on the group that went over and looked into this. I don't have to check into groups. When the NAACP calls me, Adolphia Pruitt calls me about all the incidents that they're receiving phone calls about, about the people being beat up in there. As long as you're fine with that, then we should not pass this kind of bill. This is about a civilian oversight. I saw this with my own eyes. I don't have to go to anybody to see. If, if you got a TV and you watch the news, when a guy is getting beat up and the guards are afraid to go in there. This is only happening in the city. It's happening in the county jail too. This is about a civilian oversight committee. I know the mayor would prefer a paid, picked by her committee. Then we go back to it falls on deaf ears and doesn't come out of committee. It doesn't come be, it doesn't get any farther than the walls of that jail. If you truly believe that people should have open representation, that we need to know what's going on in there, then, that, you know, hopefully that answers your question. No. Unless the NAACP who's talked to me about this, as well as Reverend Gray who's talked to me about this, who represents many of the churches.
Yeah, my question was more to the civilian nonprofit advocacy groups that exist outside of government that act as watchdogs in this sort of environment. I was interested to know what sort of groups like that have signed on, if they have any concerns or things that they liked about this, um, because those are some of the groups that I really listen to about our jail policies. That's, that's more where I was getting at, if you don't mind speaking to that.
Oh, no, they're, they're doing a great job. I mean, people are getting shit kicked out of them every day over there, and I haven't heard a thing out of it. And sorry about the word.
Oh, yeah.
I will keep it.
But that, that creates a good break point. Alderman from the thirteenth, would you like the Alderman from the twenty-third to yield for questioning?
I thought he already had.
Please proceed.
Still there, answering.
Yeah, I thought he already, I thought he already did that. Okay.
Right in it. I didn't want to upset.
You know what? My problem is I get passionate.
But just go ahead.
I appreciate that. So you mentioned the NAACP. Are there any other, you know, advocacy groups?
Reverend Gray, who represents multiple, multiple churches, you know, uh, also, this is the group that went in. We went in and saw this. Have you had a chance to go over and see what's going on over there?
I have not been into, I've been into, um, the workhouse, but not into the other jail, no.
Right. And I noticed when you came out of the workhouse, you, you could, you really didn't find anything, but you said, but, but you heard things. I mean, I saw the.
I don't know what you're talking about right now, and that's neither here nor there. So I, I don't know what you're talking about.
I recommend.
My question, Alderman from the twenty-third, is about what organizations, advocacy, advocacy groups, nonprofits, civilian committees, have you engaged in this? So you mentioned the NAACP church groups. Um, have you spoken with any other groups or, because I love.
I, I answered it.
So that's the only two groups. Okay. Um, then you said you, the Public Safety Director is not in favor of this?
No, what they, what they want is, I don't know that he's not in favor of it. They act like they are, but what they want is a paid, picked on by them committee. That's not a civilian oversight committee. Civilian oversight committee are civilians. It's not a paid, you know, and I know there's certain people here, uh, that are gonna try and go down the mayor's line on this. And where I'm at on it is it's a civilian oversight committee. Something needs to be done. We can argue this all day long, but go in there. Go in there yourself personally, and if you are not just absolutely appalled, if you don't come out of there in tears, when you got groups of people that are being held multiple days in these small little glass box rooms where they can only sleep on the floor or on the bench with one toilet, no showers, go in there and see what you, see how you come out. I have friends over there that call me, you know? So I answered your question, I feel like.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your time. Uh, thank you so much. Those are all of my questions, and I yield back. Thank you.
Alderman of the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I want to, uh, just first start off by saying I, I admire the empathy of the Alderman from the twenty-third on this issue. When, when we look around, uh, at, uh, you know, elected officials and, uh, people in positions of power, uh, I think that there's not nearly enough people who, uh, who show the sort of empathy towards people, uh, in custody as the Alderman from the twenty-third does. And I think that we, we should really, uh, uh, admire that. Uh, I also, uh, really respect the, uh, the transparency that he's brought forward in a civilian oversight board. Uh, we talk about transparency a lot. There's not a whole lot that's more transparent than, uh, than actual residents of the city, uh, being able to kind of peek their heads into things and, uh, look at what's really happening. Just like he has, I've spent, uh, a fair amount of time in both, uh, CJC and the workhouse, uh, both, uh, as a result of my service on the Public Safety Committee as well as in, uh, my, my private practice. I, I did raise in committee, and I still have a few concerns about this. I, uh, the reason that I voted to get this out of committee was to, to allow it to advance to the floor to have discussion and to make some changes to it. Um, I was anticipating a floor sub coming out today, and it doesn't seem that there is one. There's parts of this bill, uh, and, and like I said, I think it's a good bill, uh, there's parts of this bill that don't really make sense without what we were calling in committee, the umbrella bill. Um, and we, we, I think we either need to pump the brakes or we need to make some changes in order for the bill to, to make sense. Uh, additionally, uh, the fiscal note here provides for a director and two investigators and two legal investigators. But they're reporting to the director who then doesn't report to anyone. So it, it, in the current iteration, there's a lot of similarities to the COB, which, uh, again, I, uh, I really like what we're trying to do with this COB. I think that we need to tweak the COB in order to make it a, uh, a more useful entity, uh, in order to get, uh, what we're trying to get out of it. Um, it, it hasn't at this point proved to be a terribly effective model. Uh, I, what I don't want to do here is create something uh, that isn't going to get the job done that we would like it to. I think everyone here, I hope at least, does care about what's happening inside of these facilities. I think we have a responsibility to the individuals that we incarcerate to ensure that they're safe, fed, uh, and have basic human dignity. Um, my concern is that this, excuse me, that this in its current iteration isn't going to kind of clear that hurdle, that either we need to make some changes to this bill or we need that umbrella bill, what we were calling the umbrella bill. I, uh, spoke with the administration earlier. My understanding is that the, uh, city counselor is finalizing that umbrella bill at the moment. Uh, I would be open to, uh, I, I remain open to this bill, and I think it's an integral part of, uh, of oversight of our facilities, but I think we might be putting the cart before the horse here, because there's even references to that sort of umbrella bill inside this legislation. So we would be passing legislation today or perfecting legislation today, excuse me, that, um, could create some, some absurdities because it refers to legislation that is not in place. I, I remain open to making changes to this or to, to pushing this through at the same time or after. We do have some sort of umbrella, uh, uh, bill. Um, but at, at the moment, uh, I would either request that this gets hold, held, excuse me, or else, uh, I will uh, not be able to support it today just based on the, uh, the current language of it, not the, not the spirit of it, not the idea of it, just literally the, the, the letter of the law on it. Uh, thank you.
Can I reply? Uh, uh, no, not right now. You can put your hand up and I can recognize you in a minute. Uh, Alderman from the eleventh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to, um, inquire of the Alderman from the twenty-third, please.
Alderman from the twenty-third will yield a question to Alderman from the eleventh.
Yes.
Alderman from the eleventh, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, one, I, I do, uh, appreciate your, uh, work on this. I think we all know that there are some major issues, and I um, echo the Alderman from the twenty-fourth that, um, I do support this idea. I appreciate the spirit of it. Um, I don't think that this is a bad idea. Um, I'm just wondering if you would be open to maybe, um, reaching out to a broader group of folks that do work on these issues?
No. No, the answer to that would be no. And I do support an umbrella bill separate from this bill. Not, you know, they're putting one together. I told them it would go through a committee. This is a separate bill to be held separately, but no, I'm going off of my own heart, my own beliefs, going in there, seeing what's going on. I don't need to have somebody tell me that if I saw a car crash and I see some horrible thing, I don't need to go check with other people for them to say, gee, uh, well, are you sure you saw what you saw? Well, the people were laying all over the floor. Uh, well, you know, no, I trust what I see, and I know what I believe. And anybody that doesn't see. And anybody that doesn't see this have turned a blind eye to it. Then in, so no, I'm not gonna go around and check and say, well, did I see what I thought I saw? Uh, because I.
I, I don't think anyone is, I don't think anyone um, is disputing, um, you know, that they, there are issues and um, your observations and also your expertise as the public safety chair. I really don't think that, um, going back to the car wreck analogy, um, you know, it's like, okay, so we do have a, a intersection that has a major problem. Um, let's get with civil engineers. I mean, yeah, we can, you know, put up speed humps or put up a stop sign, but let's get with civil engineers and see, you know, maybe there's something out from, you know, their expertise and their knowledge that they could do beyond that, or that maybe they have some other ideas. So I get personally, I have a lot of transitional housing in my ward and I work with um, a lot of uh, organizations that work um, with the justice system, both in the city and county. And it really is interesting to hear what they have to say as far as, you know, how intake works and where uh, who, which uh, you know, which jail is allowing, um, you know, mental health professionals into time, which is allowing, you know, ministry at that time or any of these organizations that do work um, with uh, our justice system, you know, even uh, public defenders or prosecutors. So I think there's a lot of knowledge out there, a lot of suggestions. Um, and again, I think that you're on to something. I'm just not sure we're quite there. So thank you very much for your inquiry and um, thank you for your work on this. Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, um, will the alderman from the twenty-third yield for a question or two?
Alderman from twenty-third, we yield to the alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman from the fourteenth, please proceed.
Okay. Alderman de Carol, I wanna commend you on all the work you've put in this and I, I really understand. You know, I have people that have worked as C O's in the jail and, and the, the danger that, you know, the inmates and uh, the C O's are put in every day. Um, I guess what I, I, the only question I have, and I probably should have asked this in committee, have you consulted with the um, the union that represents the C O's about this at all?
I have, and I haven't been able to get ahold of uh, him lately. I don't know if he got, he was one of the uh, uh, I don't know what you would call it, but you know, the carpenters' union kind of.
You're right.
And I, and I have tried to get ahold of him. Uh, uh, I did run into, I did run into him at Biggie's Restaurant. It's been about a month or two ago. And certainly he, you know, felt the need for this. I mean, this doesn't just come from, uh, you know, th- th- this, this, this comes from, you know, not, not just me. I mean, I, I sat down, like I said, I sat down uh, af- after the uh, you know, Mayor Crusen put together the group for, of us to go over and look at that. We came up with eighty-one suggestions. I don't know that any of them have been followed, but I'm sure a few of them have. Um, the importance of this bill and uh, the importance not to just keep waiting. If anybody has created the perfect legislation, I'd like to meet them. What happens is we pass this and then as the umbrella committee comes along, when they ever get that done, then I will support that and get it through the public safety committee. I'm sorry, I'm probably getting beyond your question, but um, yeah, I did try to get ahold of Mr. Hunt. And uh, I haven't got any response other than I knew that originally when I started this and the phone calls that I have received from the workers and I have received phone calls telling me, please don't say anything because I'm afraid. Uh, well, I'll, I'll explain all this at the end, but I, I, I receive phone calls from workers. And I've gone in and talked to friends that are actually housed over there.
Will this, I have one more question. Will this um, bill allow access um, for the um, oversight board to have access to uh, employee files?
You know, I don't think so. It just complains.
You don't think?
No, I'm, I'm, I'd be reasonably sure it does not because uh, that, that's why you would have an umbrella committee. Because a, a civilian oversight doesn't have the power to discipline, doesn't, there's a lot of powers that they do not have. That's why you, you have the separate police, you have the separate, you know, jail oversight committee. And then the probably other committees that are out there would eventually, whenever we get this other one in, done and through, not all as part of this one bill, there was parts in the, that um, that, you know, anyway, it, it would, it would be separate. And the oversight committee, which is not civilian, it is appointed, you know, it's paid people. They would have the power to discipline and do whatever needed to be done. And they could do that based off of what the oversight committee would come back and, and um, you know, would, would see if that makes sense.
Okay, one more question.
Sure.
Has the city attorneys went over this and approved it or?
They were in the meetings and most of this is written off of what, you know, what they, right. The only things that were taken out in, 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 said that we would, I would have no problem with the oversight committee. We met in the mayor's office with this. There was, but this has been going on, this meeting's been going on for probably about eight months, nine months.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and like I, I said in that, I'm fine with the oversight committee. Or, you know, or, or what I would consider an umbrella. Because when I had multiple businesses, you, even though they ran separately from each other, we still insured them under one umbrella, which was like a, a, a larger protection or an over. So yes, the only thing that uh, this was basically taken out of what all was written. Uh, except, you know, we didn't, we did not want all the stuff that would be in an umbrella or oversight committee in it. Because then it started getting into the police. I mean, there was all kinds of stuff put, being put in this thing. And it was getting way beyond what I felt was what should be in here.
Okay.
And, and, and so this is basically after months of meetings.
Well, and I agree. I mean, there, it's been in committee. It was introduced May seventh and we've had several meetings in the public safety committee. So um, okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Alderman de Carol.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to speak on the bill if possible.
Please proceed.
Thank you. And then I, I would also welcome uh, any feedback from the alderman from the twenty-third. I just don't have a direct question. Um, Alderman from the twenty-third, I, I wanna thank you and commend you for this bill. You know, at the risk of uh, sort of speaking to the heart, I wanna say, I think I, I can empathize with why you're so passionate about this, not just because we're charged to take care of the public and all members of the public. Um, but because I know whenever there was, whenever I see fire trucks going by, I think, what if, what if that's one of my uncles, you know, or you hear of a firefighter being injured or even killed in the lineup duty? And you think, well, is it my uncle? Or perhaps there's an accident at Hussman Refrigeration out in Bridgeton? And you think, is that my dad? You know, so I, I, I wanna acknowledge that because I think that's very important, um, that it is scary. It's not just our charge to take care of these, these civilians and these citizens, but our charge to take care of our own. So I appreciate that. I wanted to praise um, page seven, section D, member qualifications. Um, I very deeply appreciate, um, and uh, my apologies, uh, colleagues, I meant page nine, letter K, age sixteen to twenty-four member, uh, that this does mandate that at least one member has to be what is, in essence, a federally recognized youth. The federal cutoff being twenty-six. Um, I do appreciate that. The civil liberties advocate member, the medical professional member, um, it is a very well thought out bill. Um, on page seven, to, to go back to that under section D, I do have a slight um, apprehension about section or subsection four at line thirteen, must not be an employee of the city of St. Louis or the state of Missouri. And only because at times that state of Missouri can be complicated. So per our Missouri state constitution, as I found out upon being elected, um, cultural workers or information workers such as library or museum employees are uh, considered de facto members of the state, uh, sort of agents of the state or, or um, so on and so forth. So I, I think that because of these complications and jurisprudence, which I had to be notified of as a new elected, um, I think that line thirteen, subsection four um, can inadvertently and unintentionally bar a greater um, uh, group from uh, from being able to hold this, the citizens group. I'm also concerned that there's no emergency clause that I can see and it may be that I, I just haven't seen it. Um, excuse me, a bit flimmy with this weather. I personally always think that, you know, the emergency clause essentially acts, if I might be a bit crass, as a C Y A legally. And that um, if we throw the entire bill, if something is found contestable in court, you just take out that relevant section. So I, I'm a bit apprehensive about that. Um, but I do, I do praise the work. You filed this May seventh. I mean, you are not kidding that this has been in committee for months in that it is a, a well attuned labor to get it to where it is today. Um, I just have those small observations, uh, the small praises, that recognition, um, which means a great deal to me. That's what this bill says to me, Alderman from the twenty-third. Um, I would never seek to put feelings or words in your mouth, but that's what it says to me. Um, and I am, uh, with that, I will yield back, Mr. President. I'm starting to ramble. So with that, I yield back and thank you.
All right, thank you. And uh, Alderman from the twelfth, I think you meant the sub ability clause. Is, it started in mercy. That's all right. I didn't want, I know, I know you would have thought about it afterwards and been like, oh man. So I wanted to just make sure and give you a tip, but uh, good, thank you all. Yeah, uh, Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanna say thank you to the alderman from the twenty-third for his um, attention and persistence on this issue. We, reform is definitely needed here. I think um, we're all, we all seem to be on the same page about that and I would love to see us get something done and I think the oversight board is a, is a wonderful idea. I do have um, a question about the fiscal note, if the alderman from the twenty-third would yield?
Yes, I will. Alderman from the twenty-third, we yield the question.
Absolutely, and if you have to address that.
Alderman from twenty-eighth, you, uh, please proceed.
Great, thank you. Um, yes, I was just looking over the fiscal note and I appreciate, um, you know, the numbers that have been provided here. I just had a question. It says in here that the budget division was consulted, but they did not verify the numbers. And so I was curious, could you just talk a little bit more about how you arrived at these? And if there was any feedback from the budget division about, about these? Cause it would add, it looks like three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to, to the total budget. And I absolutely agree, we need to invest financially um, in, in this sort of effort. But could you please just address that issue? Thank you.
Yes, so it's already in the budget. It's already was in Board Bill One. The money was appropriated for this. But we don't have and we desperately, desperately need someone to help us with this. I am definitely not an attorney. I am definitely not a CPA or anything close. Uh, you know, so this was the best that our attorney Lou Galley could help put that together for me. I mean, you, you would have to understand that this bill, I didn't, I mean, I didn't write it, obviously. I mean, I said, this is what I want. We went through, we had a lot of meetings. Long before this was even introduced, it started in the mayor's office almost on day one. Um, but it wa- it was just what we kinda took off of our, actually, our attorney Lou Galley actually took off of what was already in the budget uh, for, for such a thing. Because I, I didn't think there'd be any cost. I was kinda, but apparently there, there is. And so he, he, we kinda took it off of uh, the uh, what, what the police oversight committee's doing. And, you know, what, and so, I mean, that's kinda where that came from. You know, we need, desperately need someone back to help us with this. We, we don't have anybody at the Board of Aldermen. I hope we're looking because it used to be real easy. I would just call them up and he would put it together and he'd show me in a book. You know, unfortunately, the, we couldn't pay as much and the county took him away. And we had a great guy and now he works for the county. Um, but this was just what we felt was in the budget and what we felt would just be uh, meeting what we had thought, what we'd have to have in here to, for the bill. There's no, you know, no real genius going into this.
Thank you. That, that, that helps. And um, I know that I have not been able to attend a lot of the public safety meetings. Um, I mean, I'm not on the committee, but I would have, I would have liked to have been able to attend and watch. And if there is anything that we need to do in terms of tweaking to make sure that this is effective as possible, I'm definitely um, available and willing to, to help with that. So thank you again for your efforts.
Well, thank you. I, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the alderman from the twenty-third yield for questions?
Alderman from the twenty-third, we, the question is Alderman from six and said, yes, Alderman from six.
Thank you.
See.
Alderman from the twenty-third, it seems to me like you're on the right track here. I think I echo a lot of my colleagues' sentiments when I say that something definitely needs to be done on this. And it, it sounds like there are still some pretty significant questions with respect to budget numbers and legal issues. And um, I would like to see a more meaningful conversation with the representatives from the union who represents the correction officers, other than just in, in passing quick conversation at Biggie's. I'm just curious if you'd be willing to put this on the informal calendar, if you have a commitment, as you just heard from the alderwoman from the twenty-eighth and myself, and I think others who would be willing to get this bill to a place where um, we think it makes sense from a legal and financial standpoint.
No, the simple answer is no.
Okay, thank you. You have questions.
Well, I was answering the question, but I, I'll, I'll sum it up at the end. I don't care. Right. Uh, Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I, I also um, echo the concerns of my colleagues that um, that absolutely something needs to be done about the jails. We, we saw national headline making um, incidents at the, at the jails over the wintertime. Um, and there were some that were, that did not make the news. We absolutely have complaints that need to be addressed. Um, I, I do also echo concerns that this bill is not quite there yet. And when I was watching the public safety committee, it sounded to me like the members who were voting yes did so with the understanding that there were going to be changes brought forth today um, in order to make this bill where it needed to be to get across the finish line. And so I, you know, this special meeting was called um, for the purposes of, of advancing the redistricting bill. And maybe if we hold it um, another week so that there is a full board attention on this. I know that some folks are traveling and are not even available today for this full conversation. Um, so I, I realize that the question has already been asked, but I, I want to support this bill. I want to support oversight over our jails. I think it is, is vital. And, and I think that this umbrella organization that the, that the mayor's office is working on to put them together is a great partner to the bill, to the work that you're doing here, Alderman de Caro. And I think getting those two bills in line together to make sure that we're not passing this one and the having to maybe repeal parts of it or adjust parts of it in the next one. It would be a whole lot cleaner if we just move through all as one. Um, and so I, I appreciate the pressure that you're putting on the administration. I think that is, that is worthy um, to say, hey, we need to get this done. We've been talking about this for months. I think that, that is great and that pressure has yielded um, a bill that we're hearing is coming. So um, I, I also would like to request, uh, if this could just be put on the informal calendars so that we can make those tweaks and, and make those perfections potentially next week after that next bill. So that we can make those tweaks and, and make those perfections potentially next week after that next bill, um, is introduced. And otherwise, I, I don't know that I can support it at this point, and I don't want to say that because I think this, again, this is, this is good work. I, I just don't think that the bill is there right now. Thank you.
All the women from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to move this board bill to the informal calendar.
You can't. Over the objection of the, of the sponsor.
It seems that's accurate.
You know what that requires?
When I get to kill somebody?
No, not quite.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware of the rules. Thank you for asking.
Mr. President, as a point of personal privilege, could I ask for a application as to this procedure?
Yeah, so, uh, it is. I don't know, over all the years that I've been here, I've seen anybody. Attempted to move a bill, uh, to the informal calendar over at the request of the sponsor. Uh, rules lay out a clear process for moving a bill off the informal calendar. At the requ- you know, against the wishes of the primary sponsor. But this is one of those places where our rules are silent, right? So. So if indeed we proceeded and recognize this. This motion, uh, then. My application would be the same application that requires a bill to be moved off the informal calendar. At the request of the sponsor, which would be a two-thirds majority of the members of the Board of Alderman. The appropriate thing is to. Pro- appropriate thing would be to, you know. Let the sponsor. Decide after all the debate, if the sponsor would want to. Uh, move their bill to the informal, uh, calendar. And. You know, because again. Like I said, if you look at our, our rules, and if you want to refer to it, I believe it's. Sixty-one, sixty-two, or sixty-three, it's right in there. It talks about the primary sponsor having the ability to defer action by moving it to the informal calendar, right? It does not, uh, you know, say that a member. Can over the wishes of the sponsor, but it does, but they do talk about being able to move it off of the informal calendar. You know, against the wishes of the, of the primary sponsor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate your, um, parliamentarian breakdown for me. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Yeah, any, any further, any further discussion on, on that request? Any further discussion or request? All, all the one from the six, since we, since, uh, again, uh, I'd have to go back and, and re. Take another look at that section, but. I don't think that that motion would be in order. And I think that the sponsor, uh, has direct control over their bill. And the sponsor would be, would have the opportunity to put it on the informal calendar. And if they refuse to put it on the informal calendar, if you would have had the votes to move it to the informal calendar. Be a super majority, then certainly. The sponsor would not have the votes to adopt it or perfect it today, so the results would be the same.
That's fine, Mr. President. Thanks for the explanation. I'll withdraw my motion at this time.
All right, thank, thank you all the one. Any fur- any further discussion and further discussion? All of them from the twenty-third, you recognize the clothes.
So every day we don't do anything. You know, is just another day. This has been. Almost a year. And in that year. People are getting beat up. I come to this. I'm gonna tell a fast story. And I'll leave out some of the details. Certainly, Mr. Glass is aware of it. But about a young lady who. At a sports game. Takes a couple salt shaker, salt and pepper shaker, puts it in her purse. And she's bipolar. And. They, she gets in a fight with the. Security people there. The police are called, right? This young lady ends up going to jail. Her family says, look, she needs her medication. And. You know, so. They said, no. We have to go through our stuff first before she can have this medication. And within a night, she killed herself, okay? It's a true story. Dale Glass could back that up. When I complained, I was told, wow, she killed herself, not because of that. She killed herself because her family didn't bail her out. I've had stories from. Young people that don't necessarily, one. Person that doesn't necessarily identify. As the sex that that person is. And was basically raped. Which could be backed up by, again, by either Mr. Glass or Mr. Carson, who apparently. Decided they were going to retire because they talked too much. That's all that I could figure. That place is like a fortress of trying to get information out of. Can I sit back and say, gee, it's okay? If. Someone that doesn't identify in a particular gender, it's okay if they get raped? You know what I was told? I was told by Dale Glass, well, that happens. And weaker people get taken advantage of. That's just kind of how it is. Can I sit back and say, yes, I'm gonna put this on an informal calendar? I'm not. I can't face the media. And say, gee, you know what? I put this, this is not a perfect bill. A perfect bill can come. Changes can be made to this bill in the future. An oversight or a over umbrella committee is the only way I know how to refer to it, because in business, that's what we did. Needs to come. I don't have an issue with that. It's a separate bill. But when you start putting all that stuff into this bill. And you start doing it, as long as you're fine, while we're sitting around playing games, people are being raped. People are being killed, are killing themselves. And it's all shut in there. Like a steel trap, as long as anybody on this committee is fine with that, vote against it. But I am not, at least. I can't. I have been fighting for this. For years. I'm the one that went over to the workhouse at the time when we had four or five people die. In there. I'm the one that went over and fought against the workhouse, not to close it. But to improve it, to make sure things were done right. I go in and out of there, not as an attorney. I go in and out of there with, with, like me and Alderman Muhammad have done in the past. Just to check up on things. Uh, you know, the media is not allowed in there. This is an important bill. If you want to vote against it, vote against it. At least I know in my heart. If somebody dies in there tonight, or somebody's raped in there tonight, or somebody's beat up in there tonight. I've done my best. To try to make things better. Some people would probably say, you know what? Why, why are you trying? This isn't a, 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 a. Like a, a, a day camp for people. Some people would probably say, so what if they're being beat up? So what if they're being raped? They're all prisoners, they're all pregnant, something bad to be there. Yes, do I believe that people need to be in the jail? Yes. Do I believe everybody's guilty or innocent? I don't know. But do I believe that they need to be treated like people, whether it was the air conditioning? You know, or because they're flushing the toilets, stuffing them with. Stuff which causes a flood, so they turn the water off so that prisoners that are not involved in this can't have water? Because they say, gee, well, we're gonna punish them so they can't flood the cells. So what we're gonna do is we'll shut the water off to the building. That's not acceptable to me, I'm sorry. This bill, I'm passionate about it. I want to take a vote on it. You want to vote against it? Vote against it. But every day, we play around and we debate and we play. Just remember. That people are not getting. The help that they need, whether you believe they're guilty or not guilty. People are being raped in there, and you can believe it or not, Mr. Carson would probably come in here and tell us. You know, if he was not all of a sudden retiring. You know. We could find out had my sunshine request not went over as KK and they said, oh yeah. They told Lou, Lou Galley, our attorney, oh, we're, we're aware, there's a glitch, and so sometimes they come over as KK. They didn't call and tell us that. And then when we said, gee, you know what? Well, okay, we'll do it this way. No. So my next thing is I'm gonna subpoena the records. I shouldn't have to be, this should not be the fight that it is. Anyway, with that, I close, you know, I, I would appreciate. That we get this thing moving along. Changes can always be made with bills. There change, we change stuff every day. We have, there is no such thing as a perfect bill. But at least I know in my heart. That I've done everything I can to try to protect the people in there. Anyone who'll vote against it, vote against it. But I, I would ask, and I. Whatever, that we. We, uh, perfect this, uh, board bill.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third, seconded by Alderman from fourteenth, that we perfect board bill nineteen committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
No.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
No.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Morton.
No.
Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Collins Muhammad. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Kong. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
No.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Oh.
Alderman Stevens.
Uh, present.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
No.
Alderman Muhammad. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Kong. Twelve I votes. Seven no votes. And three voted present.
By your vote, by vote, sustain the motion, Alderman from the twenty-third. And effective board bill nineteen committee substitute.
That is extent of board bills for perfection.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize, um. On board bill one fourteen on the third reading consent calendar, would you like to? Do the informal.
Yeah, I would like to move board bill one fourteen to the informal calendar. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Uh, move board bill one fourteen from the third reading consent calendar to the third reading informal count.
Don't note it.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill one fifteen, one zero two, one two zero.
That it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, one fifteen, one zero two, and one twenty.
Okay, uh, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Move about all of them from the tenth, entertain the second. Second about all the one from the fourteenth in discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morton.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Muhammad. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Twenty-two I vote.
I vote, staying the motion, all of them from tenth and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossment.
Board Bill one fifteen, one zero two, one twenty. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear myself.
Page twelve.
Board Bill one thirteen sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing the city of St. Louis, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Steel Coat Grashit LLC project series twenty twenty-one, in the principal amount of not to exceed sixty million dollars, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as are necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof.
All ones from nineteenth, you recognize on third reading, the final passage of board bill number one thirteen.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we uh finally pass board bill one thirteen.
Move by Alden from nineteenth.
Second.
Second, uh, second about Alden from the fourth, Alden from nineteenth, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, as we had discussed um the last few weeks, this board bill is the financing uh piece of um the project in the Steel Coat uh development area. Uh, this, as we know, we've talked about it, is uh the support of finance for a hundred and ninety-six units of living that will include our uh workspace living and affordable housing living as well. And uh a large retailer, and we have talked about this, that it is target. This uh bond revenue is all uh the responsibility of the developer, does not affect the city in any kind of way or any of our taxing districts. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved, it's been moved by Alden one from the nineteenth, second about Alden one from the fourth, that we third reading, final pass, board bill one thirteen. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ngrasia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't hear you.
Abstain.
Thank you. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morn.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Uh, excuse me, aye.
President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Twenty-one I votes, one abstain, and one voted present.
I vote, staying the motion of Alden one from nineteenth and third read, and finally pass board bill one thirteen.
Board Bill one thirty-two as amended sponsored by Alderman Ryan and the following other persons. Todd, Gunther, Ngrasia, Rice, Stevens, Morn, Cone, Bosley, Spencer, Calder, Switzer, and Navarro. A board bill repealing ordinance number six six four one nine, six eight four zero four, and six nine four two nine pertaining to the possession of marijuana and paraphernalia and updating local enforcement priorities, probable cause and reasonable suspicion standards and disciplinary standards to harmonize city policy with Article fourteen of the Missouri State Constitution.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of board bill one thirty-two as amended.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, I move to third read and finally pass board bill one thirty-two as amended.
Alderman from twenty-fourth, um, and second about Alden one from the eighth, Aldman from twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, so last week, we went through uh this bill in, in quite a bit of detail. I don't wanna bore anyone with it again. Um, this bill basically just harmonizes uh our local ordinance with the state's constitution as well as uh further decriminalizes small amounts of marijuana. It has the buy-in from the Public Safety Director, it has the buy-in from uh the Director of Personnel. Uh, we've talked to basically every stakeholder uh along the way. Um, and uh, you know, I'm happy to uh to address any last minute questions or concerns, anything of that nature. Uh, but I would ultimately ask for your favorable support.
Um, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize, close.
Uh, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, second about Alden one from the eighth, that we third reading, final pass, board bill one thirty-two as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ngrasia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morn.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Twenty-three I votes.
I vote, staying the motion of Aldman from the twenty-fourth and third read, and finally pass board bill one thirty-two as amended.
Thank you.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment.
Uh, Courtesy Resolutions Calendar is empty. Alden one from the, no. Madam Clerk, uh, do you have something on the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar?
No, sir, we forgot to do the um in, in the engrossment.
Yep, that's right, it's at the very bottom of the page.
I think I threw you off.
Report of, and, uh, report of engrossments.
Board Bill one fifteen, one zero two, one twenty, one thirteen, and one thirty-two as amended.
All other business being suspended, the presence of an open session, fix his signature here to the, to the end that these may become law.
Point of order.
Uh, Alderman from the fourteenth, please put the state.
Just one question, isn't one fourteen supposed to be on that engrossment list?
Um, no.
On my agenda. Okay. Oh, okay, that's fine, thank you, sorry.
First reading resolutions. I mean, we will dispense with line item nineteen, first reading resolutions.
Resolution one thirty-nine sponsored by Alderman Ballmer. Mount Flyer Properties LLC in the city of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize first reading, resolution one thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, re- resolution one thirty-nine is uh going to be a new development in the Tenth Ward. Uh, it is a local brewery called Heavy Rift Brewing, currently in Dogtown. Uh, they are going to be building a new brewery, brew pub, restaurant, bottling plant at forty-nine fifty-seven Filer Avenue, which is right up in Kings Highway, currently the site of a big hunk of dirt. So, it was a, a, a development beforehand that was underway that the, the pandemic basically put a stop to. Uh, and it's been sitting dormant, uh, just mud running everywhere. Uh, and this is going to be a very viable project, not just for the Tenth Ward, but for the city. Uh, bringing, I believe, up to fifty new employees to the city also with this, with this development. And uh Alderman Ryan, they're still staying in the twenty-fourth ward with their other location. They're, they're not, they're not abandoning you, they're merely expanding. Uh, with that, uh, I, I believe I died, I need to request to assign this to a committee, sir. Federal offices have had one of these.
Yeah, make a motion to assign it to whatever committee.
Yeah, I would uh make a motion to assign this to HUDs.
It's been moved by Alden from the tenth that we signed, one thirty-nine HUDs, second about Alden from ninth, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, Madam Clerk, please sign resolution one thirty-nine to HUDs. Uh, Alderman from the twelfth.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to motion to suspend the rules, so as we might introduce resolution one forty-one to the first reading.
Would you like to add also, resolution one forty-two? I think that there was a second one also, one forty-one and one forty-two.
Yeah, if it pleases you, Mr. President, I will happily motion for one forty-one and one forty-two.
Okay, I'm assuming that once, there's still a desire to handle one forty-two by the sponsor. Um, yeah, uh, it's been moved that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing resolution one forty-one and one forty-two. Uh, but Alden from the twelfth, entertain a second on the. Second it by, I think it was Alden from twenty-fourth. Yes, moved by Alden from twelve, second by Alden from twenty-fourth, that we suspend the rules for purposes of introducing resolutions one forty-one and one forty-two. Any further discussion, Alden, Alden one from the fourteenth.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I meant to lower my hand, I thought we were moving on to something else, sorry.
All right, no problem, moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ngrasia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Morn.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Pass.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Twenty-two I votes.
I vote, staying the motion of Aldman from the twelfth. Suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing resolution one forty-one and resolutions one forty-two. Madam Clerk, please place resolutions one forty-one and one forty-two on the first reading, first uh reading of resolution calendar.
So noted.
Well, please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Resolution one forty-one sponsored by Alderman Stevens, Alderwoman Ngrasia, Alderwoman Rice, Alderwoman Switzer, and Alderman Gunther, Declaration of Our Fundamental Reproductive Freedoms.
Alderman from twelfth, you recognize on the first reading of resolution one forty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, Mr. President, I would motion resolution one forty-one be sent to the Health and Human Services Committee for hearing and review.
All right, it's been moved by Alden from the twelfth, entertain a second on that motion, second about Alden one from the eighth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries, Madam Clerk, please sign resolution one forty-one to health.
So noted. I'm sorry, I'm still looking for resolution one forty-two.
Okay.
Resolution one forty-two sponsored by President Reed and Alderwoman Ngrasia, Health Commissioners Order Number Five for COVID-nineteen.
Alderone from the sixth, you recognize on first reading of resolution one forty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, resolution one forty-two is the thirty-day renewal of the local public health order that we are required to pass at this body in order the thirty-day renewal of the local public health order that we are required to pass at this body in order to, um, have the mask mandate remain in place. And with that, I would ask for unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Um, I renew my motion.
Uh, now, now make a motion to adopt it.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we adopt resolution one forty-two.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, entertain a second, second about Alderman from the eighth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Ms. Lanerson, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcement.
Thursday, November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, the office will be closed in honor of Thanksgiving holiday. Friday, November twenty-sixth, the office will be closed in honor of Thanksgiving holiday. That is the extent of the announcements.
Uh, any further announcements, any further?
Yes.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I would like to invite everyone to the first annual Bevo Winter Lights, uh, lighting on, uh, Small Business Saturday, November twenty-seventh, at the Sebby Fountain at five o'clock. We will have entertainment from the Saint Stevens Youth Choir. And, uh, many of the small, small businesses on Graboy are offering specials. The Bevo's gonna have a winter market all day Saturday, so come on by to the Bevo and, uh, enjoy your first, uh, winter festivities and the lights will be put on shortly after five as soon as dusk hits, okay? Hope to see you there.
Thanks, Alderman.
All right.
Oh, Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, want to also invite folks down to South Grand for the annual Christmas tree lighting on Saturday. And it'll be the culmination of a Small Business Saturday down there on South Grand as well. And so as the, as it gets darker outside, come on down to South Grand and, and help us turn on the lights. And please just remember all of our incredible small businesses who have been through so much over the pandemic, um, and shop local, um, spend your money at, at local, um, spaces and also just a huge thank you and a happy, um, Thanksgiving break to our staff and to STLTV for all of the work that you have done over this past month. Um, thank you, please enjoy your family's good food and rest well.
All right, thank you, Alderman, Alderman from twenty-seventh.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is going to be, uh, this week we are ending up. And regards to our pandemic, I hope everyone is looking at the thankfulness that they have for their families and our community. And so, uh, I wanted to invite everyone, the twenty-seven ward has kicked off and been pretty busy. Today we'll have two, uh, food box giveaways and delivering to residents within the ward and then Thanksgiving we'll have two hot food services. One is, um, Feed the Community at City Hope Bible Church. And this is the twelfth year for this young man Keith Jefferson came to me twelve years ago and said God told him to feed the people and he's been doing it every year. Last year was the first year that they didn't do it. They, uh, deliver to the seniors that don't have families, hot Thanksgiving meals on Thanksgiving Day. And then now we're working with Boss Twenty-eight and they're gonna deliver a hundred hot meals to, uh, homeless people within the city. And, uh, then we're gonna have in Walnut Park East, they're gonna serve a hundred people hot Thanksgiving meals. So everybody, I just hope we all take everything and look at how fortunate we are. And I want to thank my residents to make sure that they understand that we as elected officials appreciate them and love them and hope they have a safe, enjoyable holiday.
All right, all right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to invite everyone out to Small Business Saturday this weekend in both the, the Loop and in the Central West End, a lot of great things going on, uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so, um, hope you all are able to get out and get a chance to, uh, to support our local, our local businesses and happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, also just want to wish everyone a safe and happy, uh, Thanksgiving with their families. Uh, but also remind everyone that, uh, this evening from six till ten is our annual Cherokee Street Thanksgiving. Uh, it will be this year at twenty-seven twenty Cherokee. And if you get there, uh, early enough, you may find the Alderwoman from the twentieth and myself, uh, carving up turkeys, uh, to serve the neighbors. So, uh, please come out twenty-seven twenty Cherokee tonight at six to ten. If you can't make tonight, uh, please also stop by Cherokee on Friday as we have our annual black-owned, black biz, uh, Black Friday, Black Business Black Friday. So please show up for that as well. So thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, echoing my colleagues about everyone having a blessed, thankful and peaceful Thanksgiving holiday and holiday break and about, um, the small business getting out here and supporting our small businesses and our communities is so important. I want to announce that on Thursday, November twenty-fifth, there will be a Thanksgiving feast at House of Soul on Washington given by my brother Keith and Stallings with the Access Foundation, Kwame Group and some others. They're collaborating, the dinner is free. They really cater and have been out, um, giving out flyers and everything to our unhoused neighbors, uh, down in the community. So they feed them a hot, full, hot meal. They also have clothing, shoes for men, women and children. So, but again, that will be on Thanksgiving from twelve to three, just show up. Um, it's a good volunteer, um, opportunity to be a family. Also, in the spirit of small business in the twenty-sixth ward on November the twenty-fifth, uh, twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, at Better Family Life, um, fifty-four fifteen page, shout out to my brother Chris Benson, who has the natural hair and black cultural expo that he has kept going, um, consistently every year. So this is the sixth annual one and it will be, um, again at Better Family Life on November the twenty-seventh from ten AM to four PM. So let's be intentional this year about how we spend our dollars on Black Friday and how we can, um, support our communities as well. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, first I just want to give a shout out to Urban League again because the volunteers, let's give the volunteers their due. When you pack and prepare four thousand giveaways, that's something else. So thank you to all the volunteers because you helped make this city do the right thing. Uh, also I wanted to, uh, uh, say to all my colleagues, we've had a rough year. With this particular next few days, please take a moment for yourself. Please do, because you, you need to have that healing so we can be prepared to carry on. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, contention, I'll put it that way, that is unnecessary, but necessary to some. But we are gonna walk our way through it, we're gonna talk our way through it, we're gonna legislate our way through it and we're gonna be a better body when it's all over and done. So I say blessings to all. Make sure we spend our dollars with our small businesses, that's critical. Uh, but again, be blessed, be safe, but most especially, take care of your mental health. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, um, thank, give thanks to all of my volunteers this past weekend that helped me pass out turkeys and side items so that they can have, um, uh, I guess you could say a good Thanksgiving. Um, I like to give a special shout out to uh, one of my constituents, he's a freshman and he needed some community hours, so he was very helpful uh, in, um, uh, helping me, very helpful, woo, and, um, I gonna take, uh, Alderwoman Davis's, uh, advice. I'm going for some me time this weekend. I'm not cooking anything. I'm going to see my daughter in Kansas City. Oh, wow. So I'm taking some me time. Soon as I get off of this Board of Ordinance meeting, I'm hitting the road, so I'm gonna be short, that's it. So everyone have a safe and happy, uh, Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much, of course I am, but you all don't eat too much, okay?
All right, thank you for that, Alderman. Any further announcements, any further announcements? I just also want to thank the staff, STLTV, uh, our clerks, you all have just done a tremendous job. I know and all of us know that it has been a very heavy lift. Uh, you know, generally speaking, for those who don't know, they have at least two hours of better of work to do before any of the meetings we have. And then after the meetings, they have at, at least a couple hours and I'm sure, uh, the clerk may chime in and say, no, that's three or four hours before, three or four hours. Because there's a lot of work that go, that goes into it. And so the staff has just been just, uh, just tremendous. They've been slammed with all these community hearings and everything, so I just appreciate it so much. Let's give them a big, huge round of applause. And thanks to each and every one of you. We're heading down the stretch on some really important bills and, um, you know, uh, this board always rises to the challenge, so I appreciate all y'all. Have a very safe holiday. And, uh, before we get to the excuse Alderman, I just want to remind Alderman from the ninth that, uh, a couple of your fellow no people happen to be on the list today, so. So you're the last, you're the leader of the, of the no crew on, on excuse Alderman, so you're gonna have to be especially loud. But by doing that, remember two of your, two of your fellow no crew people are on this list today. So, um, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to excuse the other persons from the first, the fifteenth, the sixteenth, the twenty-first, the twenty-second and the twenty-fifth. Those are good lottery numbers for you folks also for necessary absence.
Been moved by Alderman from tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the first.
Could you repeat those numbers again?
Now that, that, that may inspire Alderman to recruit some more. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose.
No.
Oh.
What?
Motion carries. Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
All right, and the power ball is six, thank you. All right, I, uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adjourn hopefully till Friday, December third at ten oh one AM, thank you.
The move, for the Alderman from the first ward, I object. Wait a minute. I wasn't here to object. The move for the, she, you know why she objects, she knows that, uh, uh, an adjourn. Bad of emotion, she does that just to mess with. It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all. Safe holiday.
Bye. Be safe, enjoy yourselves.